Good evening, welcome to the Towns of Lacey Caucus Meeting, October 8, 2015. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws, 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Lacey Beacon was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We're going to begin with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, Pine Barrens 500, November 13 through 16.
This is an annual event that the Pine Barrens 500 Adventure Riders do through the New Jersey Pines, which gets approval from the New Jersey Pines and then needs to notify and get approval from each adjoining municipality. Obviously, a portion of their race does go through the Lacey Township. They've been doing it for 10 years without any issues. We've never had an issue and it's November 13 through 16, so I just need approval from the governing body.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, 2015 Best Practices Checklist.
It is annually required that the municipalities perform a best practices checklist based on questions that were presented to them from the Department of Community Affairs. I have provided you with the list of questions that myself and the CFO have answered and it is based on CFO and the clerk to answer them. There's 50 questions here, of course, depending on the selection of your answers depends on the rating of your state aid that you receive. Obviously, we have no penalty because we fell into the category of 41 to 50 questions with yes, so there is no penalty on our state aid. Of course, as your answers change and go down, there is a declining balance on how much of your total aid would be deducted, but we're not going to have any effect on that and these will be submitted by the October 16 deadline.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, request for extension of time for a storage trailer.
Okay, this is a storage trailer that is a 646 Fairview Lane. We had received several complaints from the neighborhood with regards to the length of time that the trailer has been there on the property. It has been there since shortly thereafter October of 2012. It contains obviously some contents of the resident's home. They are currently working through the REM program to raise and rebuild their home. Loretta has offered, you get an initial 90 days. They had put it there without any permits. We got them to get the permits and she has since extended it two other times for an additional 90 days each time, but they are still well beyond the time limit, but they are looking for assistance to keep it there. Well, one part of her letter says December 15, the other part says January of 16.
I've gotten a lot of calls on this from the folks that live in the neighborhood down there.
Yes, we have.
It's just, it's an ongoing thing and, you know, we all recognize Sandy, you know, we're trying to do everything we can help, but the quality of life with the neighbors apparently is starting to be affected. So I think if we do anything with an extension, we should minimize, you know, whatever it is, because it says in the letter that the extension, that the storage container will have to be off this property before they start construction. I just don't want to see us get until December and then all of a sudden construction's pushed back another six months. I had suggested that the people that have it, you know, these pods can be stored on site in these pod companies and maybe that would be a better, you know, fit, but, you know, it's up to the committee.
I would agree with what you said, that whatever we do, put a sort of one more extension, but then that's it.
We could draft a letter, one more extension, but that's a good idea because they are able to store some of those pods on site.
Yeah. You want to give it to the end of December and then, you know, ask them to store it off site?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number four, 1129 Laurel Hill Law, request to encroach training easement.
Okay, we had faced on, again, complaints that were received with regards to accessory structures built on a house without any permitting, encroachments upon the right-of-way encroachments upon easements, and the code enforcement officer has gone out and investigated the site and yes, there were various issues with regards to items put onto the house, carports, decks, et cetera, without permits that did encroach on the setbacks and the easements. The owner of the property made application to the Board of Adjustment to correct the deficiencies, however, some of the deficiencies were on a township easement. So obviously, the Board of Adjustment cannot hear the case and make a decision to allow those items because it is on a township easement. That easement does contain a drainage pipe. The problem being is now you have permanent structures on a township easement and if that pipe fails, we need to go in and remove those items and then who restores them? So we do need that pipe, it's not like I can relocate the drainage easement, you know, and move that there. We've had, you know, several other issues with regards to that pipe and the bulkhead there and the bulkhead did finally get fixed by the homeowner there a couple of years ago. These structures were not approved in the 1988 variance that he got in order to put the addition on the back of his house. They were put on sometime after that without the permits. It wasn't part of his initial zoning board application of 1988 as indicated in his letter.
Just to give you a little more information, this all started because one neighbor was not happy with another neighbor turning into each other and then it snowballed into what we have before us right now. The other part of the application which Veronica's talking about was a carport which was added onto the other side of the house, which did appear before the Board of Adjustment on Monday night and the Board of Adjustment granted a approval for that to become legal so that the structure that, we really didn't know was there for all these years, will now be assessed and taxed at whatever the value of that is, but what Veronica's talking about is a much more difficult issue to deal with. And I had suggested to Veronica that we talk about possibly going into an agreement or some sort of legal agreement with the owner if we don't tell them to take it down, that's one alternative, otherwise we can go into an agreement that would have to be recorded on the property along with the deeds or with title search that if at any time in the future there's the need for that pipe to be replaced, it would have to all be removed upon 30 days' notice from the town at his expense or whoever lives there at that point in time. Otherwise, if it's not removed, we would send people in, not Public Works, because we don't do this kind of work, we would hire outside contractors, send them in and then place a lien on the property just like we do on a cleanup when we do a cleanup. That's really the only other alternative we have other than taking and, you know, saying, okay, well, you've got to take it all down. I mean, it was done illegally, there's no doubt, it was wrong, but, you know, we just have to decide which way is the better way to go here. And if we decide this option two, then I would say we just carry this until, you know, Lauren can reach out to the property owner or the attorney and see if they're going to be agreeable to do something along those lines. If they're not, then we just, I think we have to take it down.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Be amenable to reaching out to the property owner and the attorney.
Working it that way? Steve, Mark?
To do the agreement.
That's the only way you could do it.
He would be responsible for the expenses for...
100 percent, because Casey can't do that kind of work.
Well, whoever the homeowner is at that time.
Right.
At the time.
But I think we have to put a, you know, if we give them 60 days once we notify them, that we're coming in here to replace that pipe, you have 60 days, otherwise we have to go and hire contractors ourselves.
And Lauren, in there, it says that he, there's still items from the 1988 variance that he did not comply with, like he was supposed to remove a balcony on that side of the house and he has still yet to do that. So, I mean, I don't want that to approve the use of the balcony staying there because he still has failed to remove that second story balcony. And I think that's noted on one of the maps that you have in your packet.
Why don't you do this, why don't you have John reach out to Lauren, John Downing, and go over everything so...
Yeah, we could, maybe it's a good idea to have Loretta in on the meeting too, because Loretta's been involved in this too.
Maybe you can just incorporate and get it resolved. Item number five, is it, any adders?
No, I have no adder.
2015 235, authorizing a convenium and executive session.
Resolution, Towns of Lacey County, motion to State of New Jersey, authorizing a convenium and executive sessions to discuss matters of personnel and anticipate pending litigation in matters of real estate.
Can I motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
adjourned?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Should I stay here?
No.
What's that time? Pete, go.
We are recording.
Okay, good evening, welcome to the Towns of Lacey Meeting, October 8, 2015. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws, 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Crescent Beacon was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We're going to begin with a salute to the flag at a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, Resolution, 2015 248, authorizing a person-to-person transfer of a plenary retail consumption license.
Resolution, Towns of Lacey County, motion to State of New Jersey, authorizing an approval of person-to-person transfer of liquor license number 151233017003 to Route 9 Restaurants. This is the former Sharkfin Inn liquor license that is being transferred as a pocket status license to Route 9 Restaurants LLC that contemplates building a new building and opening up a restaurant with a liquor license.
May I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number two, Resolution, 2015 249, authorizing a special item revenue from 2015 budget.
Resolution, Towns of Lacey County, motion to State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2015 municipal budget known as chapter 159 of the Towns of Lacey pursuant to NJSA 484-87. This is for a grant that the township receives, it's the recreation opportunities for individuals with disabilities in the amount of $9,650.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number three, Resolution, 2015 250, placing a lien on block 101.12, lot 21 for property maintenance.
Resolution, Towns of Lacey County, motion to State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of degree in cleaning up of the property located at 909 Sour Soda Drive and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $284.46.
May I motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number five, Resolution, 2015 252, placing a lien on block 361, lot 17 for property maintenance.
Resolution, Towns of Lacey County, motion to State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of degree in cleaning up of the property located at 726 Conifer Drive and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $188.28.
Can I motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number six, Resolution, 2015 253, placing a lien on block 154, lot 6 for property maintenance.
Resolution, Towns of Lacey County, motion to State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of degree in cleaning up of the property located at 811 Tampa Road and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $188.61.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number seven, Resolution, 2015 254, authorizing release of a performance bond for Lakeside Drive Road Improvement Project.
Resolution, Towns of Lacey County, motion to State of New Jersey, authorizing release of a performance guarantee for the 2012 Lakeside Drive Road Improvement Project. This has been authorized by the engineer to release the performance bond and placing the contract on a one-year maintenance bond.
Can I motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number eight, Resolution, 2015 255, authorizing release of a performance bond for block 1583, lot 5.01.
Resolution, Towns of Lacey County, motion to State of New Jersey, authorizing release of a performance guarantee for MetroPCS. This is the release of the performance guarantee and since this has been about a four-year project here, there's a recommendation for no maintenance bonds because all of the items have been in place for a long.
Can I motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number nine, Resolution, 2015 256, authorizing release of deposit monies.
Resolution, Towns of Lacey County, motion to State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Can I motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number 10, Resolution, 2015 257, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution, Towns of Lacey County, motion to State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $1,082,464.8.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number 11, monthly reports.
Municipal Clerk's Office for the month of September collected receipts in the amount of $6,297.8. Tax Collector's Office for the month of August collected receipts in the amount of $12,341,576.16. For the month of August, recycling commodities for road opening permits were collecting in the amount of $38,368.50. Recycling commodities were collecting in the amount of $534. Truck parking was collected in the amount of $150. The Public Works Department for the month of September, road opening permits in the amount of $48,792.20. Recycling commodities in the amount of $606. Truck parking for one overnight parking was $10. Department of Community Development for September collected receipts in the amount of $85,224.26. Municipal Court for the month of August collected receipts in the amount of $32,011.46. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it. Second.
All in favor? Item number 12, most to approve township meeting minutes of September 24, 2015.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Abstain.
Item number 13, most to approve caucus meeting minutes of September 24, 2015.
Move it.
All in favor?
Abstain.
Steven needs, Mr. Kennas needs abstain, so...
So three yeses.
Okay.
Item number 13, most to approve caucus meeting minutes of September 24, 2015.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Abstain.
Steven's okay with that because he's here.
Item number 14, most to approve membership from the Lenoka Harbor Volunteer Fire Company for Sean Todd.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No items? Okay, comments from the committee, Mr. Curatolo?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. First, I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, a couple of brief comments and all of them are very good and as we approach Veterans Day, I'll touch on that as well. This past October 5th, the Ocean County Health Department had a flu and pneumonia clinic at St. Pius in liaison to Lisa Township Health. Proud to report, we had over 122 total vaccinations that were administered. That may not seem like that much, but if you read some studies, as I have in public health, having been an employee of Ocean County Health Department, what we have there is the possibility for every person that gets vaccinated, some studies do reference the fact that there'll be 10 people that won't get the flu. So it's really not 122 vaccinations, you could look at it as possibly 1,200 people that are protected. So that's a good thing in public health and disaster preparedness. What we talk about is prevent, prepare, protect, and it was great to see the residents out there. Additionally, this year, along with all the nurses, we had our first mobile drop box application for people and we will be using that, as I've had discussions with the chief of police. It is a mobile application where we can go into different senior communities, different events, different parts of our township, bring that mobile box in and have people dispose of their non-liquid prescription drugs inside the box and then the resident doesn't need to worry about it, gets taken and disposed of properly. I'd also like to, as I said, be in liaison also to the Lacey Veterans Commission, talk about the Run for the Fallen. This was a great event that happened last week over here, we had a whole battalion over here that ran up, ran all the way up Lacey Road through the entire town, greeted the Gold Star families, very touching ceremony as it is every year in, really, the veterans in this town, sitting on that commission do good and great things. We have things planned coming up for Veterans Day right outside at our gazebo here to do that commemoration as well as in school. We award a flag every year to one of the young students in our grade schools that unfortunately has lost a parent or grandparent or loved one. So we'll be looking forward to that as well. This was, I guess it was about a week ago, our mayor was also at Elktoberfest, a great time to be had by all, one of our great civic organizations. The weather finally broke, we had many in attendance there and I'm sure that the people there really enjoyed it. I know our mayor was there, he spoke, other committee men were there as well. So I want to congratulate our Elks on just a great opportunity, a great time, and I think that's about all that I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Juliana?
I wanted to bring up, I don't know if anybody's ever seen the Recreation Department, the different things that go on in this flyer out. You can go online to lacyrecreation@lacetownship.org to sign up for so many different things for kids and I was reading some of this. I haven't seen all of it, but I've been reading some of it, the Zuma classes, the yoga, there's so many different things to do in the town that people, you know, don't realize, and I didn't realize a lot of these things that go on, but I'd like to let people know that they should go online to the Recreation Department. You can also register online at lacetownship.youractiveworld.com and they can go, after you find out what the organizations have and what you want to pick, you can go on there and they'll tell you all the details. That's all I really have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Kennas?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a good segue, Nick. I had a chance to sit down with Jim Wildland a couple of weeks ago just to go over the review of the summer and he had sold 4,500 beach badges this summer. They also had 460 kids in the summer rec program, which is 100 more than last year. It's a great value for parents, it's really a well-run program. And the grant that we voted on tonight, that was secured by the rec department, that's a $9,600 grant for special needs programming to be used in the rec department. The other announcement I'd like to make, if anybody is aware, Lacey Township has gotten our very own craft brewery. They opened up in the Lacey Business Park at 699 Challenger Way. The name of the company is Backward Flag Brewing. It's run by three military veterans and it's actually been a pretty cool hangout. Been there three times myself, so that's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Well, thank you, Steve.
No comments, Steve, thank you, Mayor.
I have a couple of comments. I'm sure everyone's aware that October is Breast Cancer Month, we honor, you know, and remember everyone and there's a special day coming up on October 13. American Cancer Society asked me to make this announcement, October 13 is Crucial Catch Day, it's your day to fight breast cancer. Crucial Catch Day is from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM and it's rain or shine under a tent up in Esberry Park. Everyone's invited to attend the special event to celebrate health and learn more about how to reduce your risk for breast cancer and find it early. They're going to have snacks, DJ music, photo booth, giveaways, fun activities, and most importantly, breast cancer education and onsite screenings. So it's up in the Community Health Center, 1301 Main Street in Asbury Park, so if you're interested, you want to go up, you know, you can contact us if you need more information and we'll put you in touch with the right people. But again, remember, you know, the rest of us are going to remember to wear our pink at our next meeting on the 22nd, as well as anybody in the audience taking, you know, try and remember breast cancer. Steve and jumped the gun on us, you know, told her to wear a pink tie and wore pink shirts, but thanks, Steve. Also, coming up, Lacey Chamber Commerce did this last year, they're doing it again this year, it's the Lacey Chamber Commerce Trunk or Treat Event. This is over at Gilly Park on Saturday, October 24th from 1:00 to 4:00. They're setting up from 10:30 to 12:00. It's rain or shine and what this is, is if you have your children, you want to bring them out and do some trick or treating in one location, all the different vendors in town have their cars set up where they back up, they're filled with candy and they give the candy out to the little kids if they come in costume and it's a nice event, it's a real nice event. The only difference this year, last year there was a bit of an issue with some of the cars leaving when they ran out of candy. We told them this year, everyone has to stay, there's going to be no cars moving until 4 o'clock when the event is over, so...
12 to 4.
I'm sorry, 12 to 4, yeah. No, 1 to 4.
1 to 4? Oh, I'm sorry, you know what, the vendors have to be there by 12, I'm sorry.
But it's a real nice time, if the weather's nice, it's a great event for kids to come out to. One of the guys talked about the Oktoberfest or Elk, was it Elk?
Elktoberfest.
Down at the Elks Lodge last week. That's something new that the Elks Club has started this year. It turned out to be a fabulous event and the reason that we wanted to bring it up is because all the money that the Elks Lodge raises is generally going to special needs programs, veterans programs, the different things throughout, not only our community but throughout the state of New Jersey, so they do a tremendous job. They partnered on that event this year with the Foggerd and Butcher Shop down here, Wolfgang and his crew did all the cooking, provided all the food. Food was absolutely excellent, I was there with Nikki and the food was out of this world, it was excellent. They had a beer truck outside, so it's a real nice community event, which was extremely well-attended. They had German bands there playing music, they had a lot of different entertainment and it was really something nice and if you have the opportunity, they're going to try and do it on an annual basis, certainly put it on your calendar for next year. The only other item I have is on the 21st of this month, we're going to be, we're going to be having a special dedication here in Town Hall done by Rolling Thunder, Chapter Two. Rolling Thunder's mission is to take and remind people of those men and women, the veterans that are still missing in action, have never returned from conflicts over the years. And they've got a program which they've been doing for quite a while now where they set up a chair in different buildings and the chair, the idea is that the chair is going to sit there until every single person that's missing is home and we're going to be having a dedication of a chair here in our front lobby outside. It's called the Dedicated Chair Honor, it's on Wednesday, October 21st, June 15 at 10:00 AM in the morning. The Rolling Thunder POW MIA Chair Honor Program is intended to support the main mission of Rolling Thunder by bringing daily reminders of the POW MIA issued to cities and towns, big and small, across our nation. A POW MIA chair in any location is to remain perpetually empty to help people remember that even though our soldiers are not here, there's still a space for them in existence in our life here, so we're taking out what we have in the hallway out there, the table, the desk that's there and the chair and we're going to be putting this chair out in the lobby for people to see as they come in out of the municipal building and it'll certainly be roped off and protected, so it's not going to be utilized at all. But if you have an opportunity, if you're a vet, if you're not a vet, you'd like to come out and, you know, honor them for, you know, what they do. Rolling Thunder does a tremendous job for the POWs and the MIA, so, you know, we'd like to have as many people here today as we possibly can and really make it a nice event. That's all I have, I'll open the floor to public comment.
10:00 a.m., yes, sir.
Anyone want to speak? Larry?
No problem.
Thank you.
Perry Bender, historic Bay Avenue.
Just something that somebody brought to my attention, I was hoping maybe we might be able to get this up on the township website. It's a program they're gonna be holding on October 26th at 6:00 p.m. in Ware Town. It's about reducing your flood insurance premium. I know we have another meeting before this, but I figured if we get it up earlier, people will see it. I'll just read the little blurb, it says, "Whether you are confused about coverage options or need assistance with flood mapping, in just one free," and I pointed the key word "free" there, "session, our professionals can offer you the guidance you need with on-the-spot mitigation reporting and flood insurance premium information." And as an example, they show a local one, there's one in Brick where the initial premium was $2,079.5, when they mitigated, it was $6,88. And I'm wondering, is this something that we'd be able to put up?
Is that being sponsored by a private insurance company, or is it a federal program?
It's called FRE Flood Risk EValuator.
If that's a private company, I try not to, you know, post messages for private companies without being fair to all concerned. So if it's a federal program or a county or state program, I won't have a problem doing it, but if it's a private business, I would rather not do it.
Well, can I leave this with you?
Yeah, why don't you do some investigation on that?
Because I'd have to be fair to all businesses if I do that.
Absolutely, no, I understand. Yeah, I'll check that out. I know also, they'll be talking about ways the community and township could also help people save on their flood insurance also. On a different note, very, very early, we have our preliminary date for Relay for Life, it's May 21st at Veterans Park, so it starts early and often. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mr. Moss?
Bill Moss, this came right from the river to the beach. Before I start, I have something, I think you've done mayor for each member of the council.
This is probably a private company.
Thanks, Bill.
About a month ago, I came in here and I spoke about the breakdown of the tax rate for Ocean County. I want to do that today because I now have all the exact figures that I got from Ocean County. The, so people would understand, the county tax rate, just for an idea for people to know, Lacey Township is .35.1 cent for every $100 of valuation. There are 25 towns that pay more than that, there are seven towns that pay less than[1481.54]